No. No orders. No, usually they don't make one last time. I'm guessing that's the one. Why not have to be? I bet you want to be here. A lot of processes come down. That's just different. All your virtual orders, all your stuff, your claims. That's all I heard. All like internet. Okay, so it's going to be. Charles, any other orders? Here, Menard.
Here.
Shawan.
Here.
Greg, you was here. Les, good luck.
Here.
Lloyd Johnson. Here. Please join me in the question.
My pleasure. To the flag of the United States of America and to do a recovery for which it stands, one nation of America indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our overhead projector is broken this evening, so we won't have the advantage of having that. It's been on the downfall race here for a little while. So please apologize. I apologize for not having that overhead, but bear witness on that. Do you have any open forum requests?
None.
Having addition to the agenda. Under nine eight, I'll add number four, Parker Field. Any other agenda changes? Motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second?
I'll say.
Jill?
Aye.
Jill?
Aye.
I would aye, Lloyd?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Jill?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Motion to vary five over three for consent agenda. Does move on to Wright County Sheriff's Department. Any discussion on the report we have there? Mary Nunn, we want to the 2015 financial statements from the Billiken Myers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Happy to be here to present the 2015 audit of financial statements. Had met with Council at a workshop prior to the meeting and went through in detail the management letter and financial statements and answering the questions, described the financial activity for 2015. In the end, we did issue an unmodified clean opinion on the financials and just wanted to formally present at the council meeting here. Ask if we had any additional questions. Anybody else have any questions? Otherwise, yeah, just take the opportunity to say thanks for work with the city. Really enjoy the opportunity, enjoy the relationship, and just commend staff for the great work they do on the inside as well.
And appreciate your help on that as well. We're lucky to be in a very sound financial position and I appreciate that. So we appreciate you looking into it, making sure that we get an outside look and a little more scrutiny. Is there any other questions in reference to the management letter or reference to the findings reported for financial audit? Mary Nunn, do I have a recommendation to approve with the exception of change to page 12?
I'll make a motion to approve the audit with the exception of page 12. I'll second.
I would aye, Lloyd?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Jill?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Motion to vary five over three for consent agenda.
I would aye, Lloyd?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Jill?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Motion to vary five over three for consent agenda with the exception of change to remove the knots in page 12. Page right ahead, Mark. Okay. City Council, action meeting for it. Jill?
For the month of May, I attended the Montrose Days Committee meeting, the personnel meeting, the EDA meeting that was held on the 18th. There was then some union negotiations and a special meeting on the 3rd that I attended. And then the special meeting tonight going over the financial reports for 2015. All quarters.
I attended the PAC meeting, the PAC carnival, union negotiations. Council meetings.
I attended the personnel committee meeting, two union negotiation meetings, the Chamber of Commerce meeting, also the Chamber of Commerce Special Social Event, the paint night for the Nike. It was good. The Montrose Elementary Military Service Day and the VFW teachers team, VFW Memorial Day, gave the mayor's address and the flag presentation to Senator Anderson. Montrose Elementary Spring Carnival with the dunk tank, Michelle out of here.
It was cold.
It was very cold. The Open House for Grace Place, which is our new community center that just opened up on right here down the street. The Region Every Day Food Distribution Event, the repatriated reputation of veterans from World War II with Beyond the Yellow Ribbon, the 26th with John Anderson when he came through town and his remains were repatriated. He was killed in action in June, 6th of June, 1944. Attended the VFW Happy Day Remembrance and sold copies, VFW Post Meeting, Boy Scout Meetings, Eagle Scout Reviews and their packet reviews, and troop committee meetings. Also presented a veteran's flag at the funeral for Curtis Allen, one of our veterans who passed away. He's a wayward resident, but was formerly a Montrose resident. And Beyond the Yellow Ribbon Veterans Picnic, and then lots of days working to get Grace Place ready to go. And the first lady actually said yes, and we renewed our vows for our 20th, so we're good to go.
Let's see, I had the city council meeting and the special meeting. We had a Beyond the Yellow Ribbon meeting. We also had a picnic for the vets, the carnival at the school, the gathering on Highway 12, the procession that came through. And I think, and I went to the Montrose Days meeting last night, in town. And we also, for Beyond the Yellow Ribbon, helped serve at Winston to raise money for our event.
That looked like fun.
It was a great time. And I think that's it.
Lloyd? Regular council meetings, special meetings, negotiations, and that's about it.
Maggie, a note as well, the Montrose Days Committee meetings, wish to post something to have that posted as an event where there may be a forum, but no city business will be conducted there. Just that I had to leave the last one because we had three members there and it wasn't posted. So if we can do that, that would be helpful.
That's usually the second.
What day is it?
Seven. Seven, I know the night at seven, same time.
Okay, the personnel committee, Jill, I know you've been on vacation and just getting back, so you want to briefly go over, you have the personnel committee, you have the minutes there?
Yeah, so there's two months' worth of minutes. The first month was April, which was amended, so those are in there again, and I'll go over those again. Then we have the meeting minutes from May. We discussed a social media policy that is under review, puts in place actions for social media sites like Facebook and Instagram, and how to appropriately post on there as a city. We also discussed council phone numbers on whether we were going to have those on the Internet or not. There was a discussion on office staff shirts and sweaters, and if we thought it was necessary for staff to be wearing some sort of a logo shirt at public community events. There was then discussion on fire officer pay and a proposal made at that time. Likely discussion on that one, discussion on the emergency management director position. It's a new response procedure, which is under a trial period at the fire department, and then some miscellaneous other business that was discussed briefly.
Any comments? Let's move to the social media policy.
Hey, Mayor, council in front of you today is the social media policy. I have given you an additional copy, I emailed it out this morning, just a few changes compared to what's in the packet. But before I go through that, just want to say a little bit about the policy. The purpose of social networking in government is to communicate and deliver messages to citizens and to encourage citizen involvement, interaction, and feedback. And so the policy seeks to ensure proper use of the city and Montrose's social media sites by its representatives. The scope of the policy applies to any existing or proposed social media site sponsored by the city of Montrose. And the policy also covers a private use of cities, the city's social media accounts by city representatives, its employees and agents, council members, appointed board and commission members, and all public safety volunteers to be extended affect the city. The personnel committee recommended approval to the council at their May 16 meeting. Since then, it was reviewed by the city attorney. There was just a change on page two, crossed out online dating services. Page three, under the fifth bullet point, it says not providing information related to pending decisions. We added in litigation and other decisions that would compromise negotiations. Under, there's a paragraph at the bottom before the two bullet points, we just added in city staff and council members. Under that, the staff has any administrative rights to edit any posted comments that are abusive and obscene, we made sure to add in city staff and council members as well because, you know, we don't want to just, it can be those people as well besides the public. And then under policy violations, we added, it was added, that disciplinary action would take place under the city's personnel policy guidelines. And with that, we are, staff is seeking approval of the social media policy as amended and as recommended by the personnel committee.
Discussion?
Is this just pertaining to the city's actual Facebook stuff, city's website, Twitter? It doesn't really pertain to the city of Montrose, Facebook, community of Montrose, sorry.
Uh, no, but it does, you know, if you're, if you're commenting as like city representatives, you have to be careful about what you post on other things if it pertains to the city. So you have to be careful on another website, webpage like that, if it's, if you're representing the city.
Further discussion? Motion to approve social media policy?
I'll make a motion to approve the social media policy.
Okay.
Doesn't matter, though.
I got you, Lloyd. Lloyd, second. Lloyd?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Jill?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
I would aye, Lloyd, as mentioned. Planning Commission?
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council and the audience, tonight you have included your information on pages 192 through 195 are the minutes from the May 18th, 2016 planning commission meeting. Those are included for your information unless you have questions. If none, we can move to item two, the comprehensive plan. Comprehensive plan information is found on pages 196 through 204 in the packet. We had discussed this at a previous city council meeting and then in a follow-up workshop session. The comprehensive plan this time is 10 years old and population projections for 2020 have already been met. Through the workshop session, we discussed the importance of updating this in conjunction with your A U A R and ensuring that we are proactively planning for future growth. With that, we revised the proposal for the comprehensive plan to reflect items that city staff and department rec, et cetera, could complete internally and that would be incorporated by reference. So enclosed for your consideration is a proposal for the updated comprehensive plan.
We had figured out what the cost was going to be on.
Yes, it was revised with the incorporation of the perk master plan that you recently completed and then incorporating some of the documents, the price changed from $25,000 to $18,000.
Any comments in reference to the comprehensive plan update? I show in, on page 64 line, that it still has to be $25,000 a year. Is that incorrect?
I'm sorry, what page?
Keep going. Keep reading. The last paragraph says 18.
18 is what is proposed.
Okay, motion to approve? Update comprehensive plan?
I'll make a motion to approve the updated comprehensive plan.
Second?
I'll second.
Melissa?
Aye.
Jill?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
I would aye, Lloyd?
Aye.
Motion to vary five over three for consent agenda. The second cost of 18, okay.
Thank you, council and mayor. The next item on your agenda is item number three, a request for amendment to the city's zoning ordinance, section 1071 dash four, to add language to allow many self-storage facilities as a conditional use in the B2 Highway Commercial District. And the request is have this added as, again, a conditional use in which you could identify where and when it could occur. The APINT is Great Enterprises. This is the owner of the existing mini storage facility that's located next to Casey's. When that was constructed at that time, it was a permitted use. Now it is considered illegal non-conform use. It can continue, but cannot be expanded under the current zoning ordinance. The APINT has indicated that they would like to modify the code to make it a permitted conditional use. If we do so for that site, I just want to keep in mind that it would apply to all E2 Commercial District lots in the city and not specifically to that one parcel of land. When considering a text amendment, it's important for planning commission and city council to consider your highway commercial district and its purpose in the new plans, comprehensive plan, what your vision is for that district and what should look like within your highway commercial zoning. It notes that it is intended to provide for and limit the establishment of motor vehicle-oriented or dependent high intensity commercial service activities. Your Highway 12 redevelopment plan that was adopted in 2009 suggests that you create a unique identity for the community that was going to prime back on our development. With that, the planning commission looked at those items as well as where other communities allow these storage. Five communities were looked at, including Montrose. We currently do allow it in our industrial district as it is warehousing. Delano, Rockford also include it in their industrial district. Buffalo has a specific district called Business Warehouse District, and Watertown does allow it in their C2 general commercial as a conditional use. The planning commission met on the 18th and conducted a public hearing. Three of the five members were in attendance. There was a vote of two to one to approve the request. Commissioner Nyger was not able to be present, but she did note that she would not have been in favor. So just wanted to give you permissions, recommendation, and thoughts on the process. The planning commission has suggested, and staff have written it as well, that if you are taking action to amend the code to allow it in the B2 district, that you include the same conditions that are identified in your I1, I2 district for many storage units. An ordinance is included in your packet that identifies what those conditions are. If you are in favor of amending the code, that ordinance has been developed for your consideration. If you are opposed to that amendment, there is a resolution that was distributed this evening that identifies potential finesse effect for the denial of consideration as well. So since it was kind of split on planning commissioners, I want to provide you with full opportunities for voting.
Discussion? My concern is that the storage facilities along the Highway 12 corridor doesn't fit with our vision and planning for the Highway 12 corridor that we've got laid out, not only in our previous comprehensive plan and the long-range planning, but also in the Highway 12 planning as well. We do have some existing there, and obviously that's grandfathered in, but I'm reluctant to do anything that puts another street, front-facing storage area right along the Highway 12 corridor.
Where exactly did you want to? How do you plan on expanding?
Hello, my name's Tim Smith. I'm one of the members of Great Enterprises. The property that we have there is kind of neat in that the commercial building sits up front, where we're talking about putting this, this storage building would be behind it. So it's not only behind, but below. If you are familiar with the buildings at all, the driveway goes around behind and below down there. So mini storages can sit down there, we've got plenty of room to put one in there. Wouldn't be out of sight, you know, to address your concerns, you know, there wouldn't be any further visibility. You may be able to see a small portion of the roof, you know, when you're coming, driving by Casey's, you know, looking at the angle, but that's about all you can see. It wouldn't add anymore to the view or anything like that.
Sean, how would that affect the creek that's across there?
We could potentially, I don't know exactly where in relation to where the building would be, so it's almost impossible to answer that question.
We'd have to survey it out, but we'd be at least 15, we'd be pretty quick to know anything to do with the creek at all.
How, I guess I'm not understanding, because if you drive behind the building currently, you know, you go back there, there's so much room barely through your car to get back there, you know, and then towards the end, it's even smaller and it goes right over a cliff to the back. I mean, it's a big slope that goes back there.
The slope is actually driving coming down, and then the storage would be from like the retaining wall from Casey's, you know, Casey's gas station's there, then the retaining wall dropped down. So it would start about 30 feet away from there and then go east and west. So it would, and it would go over towards this drop off that you're talking about. But there's room to put about, roughly about 140-foot building in there and still have room to drive around and use the storage.
Do you have concerns about security at all as far as, I mean, because it's not visible to the naked eye of you?
Not, not any more than normal. The backside of our mini storages are not visible either. We've had relatively little problems over there. We have the kids crossing, the creek and busting the lights and things like that, but really there's, there's not too much that they can tamper with back there. Everything's locked at all times, so unless somebody happens to move out, you know, we don't know it for a dear dude, but anyways, everything's locked at all times, so you can't get in and mess with it that way either.
What about cleaning up back there? All the garbage that is left?
We clean up when people tell us about it. We live in Hell River, so, you know, we're not always on top of it, but if somebody tells us something there, we go and get it up.
How often do you go and do some maintenance checking?
We're not out that often. We rely on our renters there to tell us what's going on, so they, they kind of keep in touch with us. They found a couch on, that was tucked on the end of the building over there, we got rid of that last week, but we don't always know if things are there.
Jill, the other concern that I have is that if we do this as an ordinance change, that opens it up to have, without restriction. And I'm very concerned about having line-of-sight issues with our 12 corridor based on what our intended purpose is. Again, I'm reluctant to do an ordinance change because of that wide-open, you know, possibilities of wherever that might be placed. I'm wondering if it would be better suited for a conditional use permit and then we look very closely at line-of-sight as well with the plan. Is that something that might be a little more appropriate?
Certainly, that would be an option. The request is to include it as a conditional use permit. We do not have any conditions right now in our industrial that require to be set that X number of feet from a highway, but you could certainly add that as a condition if you wanted.
That's my concern. My biggest concern is that we've looked at the Highway 12 corridor as a business corridor, not a storage corridor. And the industrial piece, that stands to reason to have warehousing and personal warehousing as well, but not along, right along Highway 12. And that's my concern, is that we're looking at being able to create the character of a business community along that corridor, and I think it would be detrimental if we had it wide open as far as allowing storage right up, you know, and that without some significant conditions.
Is that site still for sale?
Pardon me?
Is that site still for sale?
Yes.
And it's, so what's your intent with that? I guess I'm a little confused as far as you're trying to sell it, but yet you're trying to expand.
But if somebody tells us something there, we go and get it up.
How often do you go?
Pardon me?
How often do you go and do some maintenance checking?
Uh, we're not out that often. We rely on our renters there to tell us what's going on. So they kind of keep in touch with us. But they found a couch on, that was on the end of the building over there. We got rid of that last week. But we don't always know if things are there.
Joe, the other concern that I have is that if we do this as an ordinance change, that opens it up to have without restriction. And I'm very concerned about having line-of-sight issues with our Twelve corridor based on what our intended purpose is. Again, I'm reluctant to do an ordinance change because of that wide-open, you know, possibilities of wherever that might be placed. I'm wondering if it would be better suited for a conditional use permit and then we look very closely at line-of-sight as well with the plan. Is that something that might be a little more appropriate?
Certainly, that would be an option. The request is to include it as a conditional use permit. We do not have any conditions right now in our industrial that require to be set back X number of feet from a highway. But you could certainly add that as a condition if you wanted.
That's my concern. My biggest concern is that we've looked at the Highway Twelve corridor as a business corridor, not a storage corridor. And the industrial piece, that stands to reason to have warehousing and personal warehousing as well, but not along, right along Highway Twelve. And that's my concern, is that we're looking at being able to create the character of a business community along that corridor. And I think it would be detrimental if we had a wide-open as far as allowing storage right up, you know, and that without some significant conditions.
Is that site still for sale?
Pardon me?
Is that site still for sale?
Yes.
And it's, so what's your intent with that? I guess I'm a little confused as far as you're trying to sell it, but yet you're trying to expand it.
If we don't sell, we expand. It's, everything's always for sale. If we don't have any buyers that are interested in, then we're interested in expanding on it. It's forty-five minutes away for us to come down here, so, you know, it's a little bit of a hassle, but it's still, you know, we're willing to do it, especially if we can expand. But it is, it is for sale.
What do you think, is CUP would give her?
I would agree.
Just in case it does?
I'm very, I don't want to open it up for, as an ordinance change to what we have there right now. So I'm opposed to doing an ordinance change just for the reason that it'll put everything up and we don't have any controls to how we do that. If it is a, an off-street location, that's not going to be visible, so we got no line-of-sight there, then that would be a CUP aspect that we could address to the CUP with significant, you know, requirements, how that would have to be and where it would be set back from the street. And I think that's probably a better way to do it than an ordinance change. Is there more discussion on that?
I agree with that.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, if you look at and not at this two twelve, page two twelve, it's an ordinance amending the code to allow it in the Highway Commercial District as a conditional use. So if you adopted that ordinance, it would set forth items such as twenty-five percent sight believed to have open green space, the buildings to be closer than twenty-five feet to each other to allow parking and loading, a building greater than a hundred and fifty feet in length, adequate space for snow storage, within two hundred feet of fire hydrant, and the other items are included that are currently in our industrial district as conditions. So if you wanted to modify that to allow in your Highway Commercial District but not be visible from the highway sightlines, you could add in another condition that noted must be set back at least. And I don't have that site pulled up to see two hundred feet or whatever you're visualizing as an appropriate distance and to retain that highway frontage for goods and services to be consistent with your Highway Twelve redevelopment plan in that district. I do know at least one other parcel on the Highway Corridor that has mentioned the desire for mini storage. So you are right in saying that if you open it up for one, you can consider it might be something that multiple parcels might want. And is that your vision of what you want for the Highway Corridor? And to restrict it might be with these other conditions if you do want it in that district versus only industrial.
So that would then become, and I have it as page seventy-two, am I correct on that?
Yep.
Would be again twenty sixteen sixteen?
It would be twenty, two thousand sixteen dash zero seven for the, it's an ordinance change.
Discussion as far as the setback.
So if we changed this and allowed an ordinance change, that's so that, what are you envisioning? I mean, you don't want to see it on twelve, right?
It's not consistent with what we want to have on Highway Twelve. I mean, what we want to have a business corridor and not necessarily a storage warehouse corridor. And that, the mini storage, we've got an existing one there already. If we do that, then my feeling is that we'll have several of those that'll come up. And we're looking at just a line of storage facilities that allow for business. And I don't think that's consistent with what we have in our, in our plan. And I think that's consistent with what we have in the comprehensive plan. Nor the Highway Twelve corridor plan or the, or the other cities as well.
Then you may be referencing the resolution that was distributed this evening that denies the request.
Mm-hmm. And that's a twenty sixteen sixteen, correct?
It does.
Oh, no.
And it probably should be seventeen because I think another resolution was renewed this evening, eighteen. If you change that sixteen to eighteen.
And if we went with this, that would still allow conditional use permit as well, correct?
In the industrial district only.
Only.
So now?
So maybe just to clarify, right now you allow it in your industrial district, but if somebody wants to put a mini storage in, they need to come forward with a conditional use permit, conduct a public hearing, and submit the items that are on that list of conditions needs those requirements. The applicant is asking, could you also apply this to be allowable in your Highway Commercial District with conditions and public hearing?
Or they would still have to come forward with their plan, so we can still deny it at that time, correct?
You could deny it if they didn't meet the conditions. If they meet the conditions that you've identified, it would be difficult to deny.
Okay. I know with attending the planning and zoning meeting, the two that are for this are for it due to the fact that they don't want to restrict businesses that are in town from expanding on their businesses. So when originally backed, I think like two months ago, another business on Highway Twelve asked about mini storage, and they said no to that one. So it's kind of contradicting here what their yeses and the noes may be. So if we allow for you to come in and do this, I think it's only right that we would allow the other business that... I mean, we don't even know if possibly one of them did. It was just a topic of discussion. And it was a consideration. And that other business is farther off the highway than your current business is.
Wasn't the method in which they attempted to make the request? I mean, I didn't attend that meeting, so I have no idea. But?
The other business?
Correct.
It was brought up during planning and zoning in the council, with the possibility of adding storage. Mini storage to that property?
Council members, I think we have one new, one new planning commissioner since that time, and also one of the commissioners that was opposed or wasn't present at the last meeting. So that might be some change in the session.
Well, I think the situation's a little bit different because they already have an existing unit, and they don't want an existing unit next to it on the highway. It'll be hidden. Right, but, but behind the current business that already has a storage unit, it's a mess back there. And I just don't know how drainage is going to work back there adding to this and flooding, you know, I mean...
Well, we obviously have to build up above the flood plain, so that's something that would come up.
I mean, I just, I just walked that before the meeting tonight, and it's, you know, and I just don't perceive when you're going to do it back there. Because the drainage, I mean, everything is so compacted with garbage and trees that are knocked down, the flow is not even permanent flowing back there.
Can I interrupt for one minute? I think you're confused where you're, you're not looking in the right spot where he's talking about. He's talking about behind the building where there's a parking lot almost down there.
Yeah, back down below, which also, yeah.
So it's flat?
Yeah.
Okay. Not on the hill, but it's close.
I mean, the, the concept...
Just a reminder too, what you're discussing is actually an amendment to the zoning ordinance, not his storage at this time. It's an amendment to the zoning ordinance. So it doesn't mean...
Okay.
So really, the topic is, do you want to allow it at all in that district or not allow it? Not who, you don't pick and choose who. You either allow it or you don't.
Right, because if we allow it from him, then?
Yes.
Yes, he's our creator. As long as he meets the conditions.
How much space on Highway Twelve do we have that this could affect? We have some potentialies for redevelopment. Otherwise, our vacant commercial lots are primarily on the east side of town. Okay, so there's some maturing property if and when that gets developed.
Okay, so let's look at, depending on vote as to whether we're opposed to changing the ordinance or whether we are approved changing the ordinance. We'll do that by a roll call. You'll give me opposed to changing the ordinance or pro to change the ordinance.
So just to clarify, Mr. Mayor, this isn't a binding vote on a resolution, right?
No, it's not a binding, but I just want to see whoever asked me on which resolution we need to vote on next. Jill, opposed or pro?
I haven't fully decided yet. I'm sorry.
Well, we can't do that yet.
Well, you can, thank you, continue. I'm just still trying to read through everything. I mean, I think, you know, if these conditions are met, I don't think we have tons of space where that's all you're going to see going through town. I mean, I don't want to take up space that businesses could be in, but yet again, then we're turning down a business if we deny it.
My biggest concern is it doesn't restrict line-of-sight to change this.
Maybe we could add a petition. But I think that would be an impossibility because if you look at the property east of here, there's no way you can restrict line-of-sight. It's completely flat. I mean, theoretically, I guess somebody could buy a property and put a subway in front of it, but still, you're not restricting that line of sight. So I feel like that part of, that clause in approving it would be...
Could we do some kind of setback though where it's far enough back that you could put another building in front of it if that were to be developed?
Right.
That would be, that would be, if we could add that in that one.
No, and if someone else wanted to come in and build it?
Yes.
So they would be able to put it back far enough so that if we could put a business in front so it wouldn't, you'd see that business instead of the storage unit. And then they could go forward and let it go building on.
Jill, comments on that?
I'm just looking at, again, this applies to the entire district. If you were to have, like, on your foot setback, I'm not even sure if we put on one of the lots potentially of retail. I think you really need to look at, what is your vision for the district? And what do you hope to bring as a jobs and commerce and goods and services? Or is it opportunities for mini storage? So you really need to look at, what do you hope to see along that corridor? And what's going to stimulate the real businesses of a like nature in the district?
Just in looking at, I mean, not really doing a comprehensive look at all, but looking at just the sites we're looking at. The lots aren't very deep there. So I guess my concern would be when you start looking at Highway Commercial-type uses, highly defensive use that you're talking about, but even if you have a hundred-foot setback, that could potentially restrict future, future businesses. You know, you start talking about businesses in the parking lot, you need area for circulation, building size and everything else that goes with it. So that's just something to consider.
Do you know if any business you want to build back there with the, you know, still for a while? Now, if anybody doesn't want to have their business up front as a full storage area. Are you ready to make a decision? Okay. Let me go through and do a roll call to opposed or pro to change the ordinance. Jill?
Opposed.
Michelle?
Opposed.
I'm opposed. Lloyd, opposed. And listen.
I'm going to say Pearl, is it?
Given that, I will make a motion to approve last resolution twenty sixteen eighteen, which denies the request to change the ordinance, which was handed out this evening. Michelle?
What was it?
It's a resolution denying your request to amend section one, ten seventy-one dash four of the city code to allow these self-storage on the B-two Highway Commercial District.
No.
There's, was there a second?
No, so you made a motion. I'll second the motion.
Michelle? I vote aye. Lloyd? All right. Motion?
Aye.
Jill?
Aye.
Motion carries for one. Thank you. Thank you all.
Just clarification, Mr. Mayor. Constable Otto, is your intent to vote no on the denial?
What, yeah, so this one? It's a resolution denying or has to amend the section. Okay, no, I switch it. Sorry. I covered it.
Yes.
Yes.
And the vote of twenty sixteen eighteen to show a five of oh.
Sorry.
All right.
Next item here, members of the city council, is a request to adopt a resolution amending and restating resolution two thousand sixteen dash oh nine. It was a conditionally, a resolution that conditionally approved a CUP for four oh five Nelson Boulevard for automobile sales. This is the old Lumber Yard site. Just to recap, the city council approved an original resolution at your April eleventh, two thousand sixteen meeting to allow for automobile sales at the old Lumber Yard site. A resolution was adopted with a number of conditions. I'm not sure what page numbers it is in your packet. I have a longer packet that I'm utilizing, which is two seventeen, two eighteen.
Seventeen seventeen.
Okay, thank you. Within that resolution, there's one item that we just want to clarify or restate. It's item number aye. The original resolution was adopted with the intent to ensure that we had emergency access to that point in the event of a fire or other case that we'd be able to access copy with our fire department, et cetera. A condition was included to require shared access agreement between the two property owners. Following that meeting, there was some concern expressed with the property owner due to the limited space on the site that if we had access agreement, there would be a limited use of that portion of the property. So we've been in contact with the applicant and the property owner and the fire department and staff to try and find resolutions that still meet the safety means of the community while respecting the rights of both property owners. We think we'd resolve that with just a modification to that one condition to change it from a shared access agreement to a requirement that the front portion of the parking lot be painted or signed to no parking or fireplace. It appears that it earns an agreement with that modification. If you would consider that amendment this evening.
Any discussion?
There is a resolution that is returning, two thousand sixteen sixteen, a resolution amending at the stadium, resolution two thousand sixteen dash oh nine.
Any property owners here that want to pitch a comment? On that one? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if you have the highlighted resolution, I heard it was able to review this in the packet when I was outside, so I just added a quick paragraph on the last cycle. So that's the one that you would adopt tonight. Essentially, the, this is an amendment to the CUP, and sometimes there are requirements in the city code where there are certain, an amendment where CUP is modified. In this case, it was kind of a different posture here. We had an agreement with all the property owners, so I've added a paragraph of that. We had an agreement with all the property owners, so I've added a paragraph of that. You'll have to go along with the process.
I have a page, our resolution number twenty six oh nine. It's giving twenty six sixteen dash oh nine with aye that is, first, aye was stripped and changed to read the front porch of the parking lot shall be painted and spliced or signed, no parking, fireplace.
I think you could go further in your packet. Otherwise, there was, there was a handout with some highlighted yellow. An extra handout?
And that's twenty sixteen sixteen. That's the one. Okay.
The one of them just has the yellow. That's added.
Should be page eighty-one through eighty-three at length. I have a motion for twenty sixteen sixteen.
I'll be watching your progress. Twenty sixteen dash sixteen.
Second?
I'll second.
I vote aye. Lloyd? Aye. Alyssa?
Aye.
Jill?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Motion carries five oh on sixteen sixteen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the city council, audience, our next planning item is a discussion and action on a conditional use permit and options for Sisow or Nelson Bolard. City attorney and I are going to take team on this one. Just to give you a little planning history and then I'll turn it over to Ms. Pratt for the discussion. If you recall, in 2014, the planning commission had a request for a conditional use permit for farm supply store and equipment, and that's the property at Sisow and Nelson Bolard. A conditional use permit was granted at that time. And all of our CUP were reviewed at the end of 2015 to determine if they were still in compliance or had expired. We do have a provision in our code that says if conditions haven't been met within one year, they are considered expired. Subsequently, we received a CUP request to allow that property to be utilized for automobile sales and farm supply. The planning commission had updated appearing on this request in February and tabled action as they had requested additional information on the number of vehicles that were requested to be sold on site, as well as some of the uses within the building had changed. So they were looking for a building plan that illustrated what portion of use for auto sales and farm supply as the previous tenant canors who have moved out and Emery Supply and was a part of a portion of that. At this time, we have some discussion on whether or not the original CUP was ever any fact or expired, if that business was operational, as well as some consideration of noncompliance on the site. We do have the applicants here as well as our legal counsel. And with that, I think I'll turn it over to your legal counsel.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'll be brief on this because there's going to be some discussion on this and there's been a long history that you're aware of that dramatically still through you. I have a memo, and this is not going to be on the wrong page, of course, but I'm on page two twenty-five.
This is eighty-five.
I have all the audit information in mine. And I've prepared two resolutions, and it would be an either or situation. Number one would be a resolution, and this number might change to twenty sixteen dash seventeen, essentially amending and supplementing the terms of the original conditional use permit for outdoor sales for farm supply store, automobile sales, recreational vehicle sales at six oh one Nelson. So this would be an approval resolution, beginning on my page two twenty-seven. And one thing that we're, as Joy pointed out, that we have, at least I haven't received the information on, would be on section one of that resolution, it's looking in the second page of it. It does have blanks in there for vehicles for sale, it's basically reserved for employees and customers. That would be something that would need to be filled in. So we can go through that. The, the issue that we've been seeing on the property, and I think staff has been well aware, but there's some, there's some items that are out there that appear to be either for storage or just sitting out there and it's a little unclear whether that's junk property or what that is out there. So that needs to be clarified as well. There is a potential to have a zoning enforcement action on some of those items. And technically, specifically, section one thousand three dash nine of your city code allows the city to withhold any permits or approvals until the zoning violation on a property is corrected to the city's satisfaction. So I think either way, that'd be something that we could discuss with the applicants on how that's going to work. Let's see here, I also want to point out, the overall theme of this would be, you know, I have the two resolutions, and this is sort of harkens back to twenty minutes ago when we were discussing the zoning experiment, where we also had two resolutions, one for approval and one for denial. The approval resolution would certainly still allow the city to enforce the site for any zoning ordinance violations, any usance violations, et cetera. There would be the ability to put some conditions on this property, on parking spaces and what can be sold and where it can be located. And the city staff then would be vigilant for enforcing those as the CUP goes on, just like you would for any CUP. The denial resolution does cite the zoning ordinance violation, cites the fact that we haven't received all information, at least I don't believe we have from a planning standpoint. And so with those, those things, the council is really unable to determine whether the property is suitable, certainly for off street parking or for employees and customers. So that's sort of how it lays out, and I guess the, the way I did my memo is, it's essentially, do you want to have this business have the approvals in the CUP and then just be vigilant on the conditions? Or does the council want to, want to deny altogether? And I can't really provide a policy recommendation since I'm not a policy major, but we presented the legal options here for you, these two resolutions. And Mr. Mayor, being your discretion to allow for the applicants to comment, and the council as well, we can get a discussion on that.
Just wanted to hear from the applicant. Dan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. I'm Patrick Needon, I'm the attorney for the Donahue family. And I put together a paper regarding some of the history on the property. I received Mr. Pratt's email this morning with the proposed alternate resolutions. And we are not asking for either one of those. We had proposed clarification, I sent to Ms. Faust almost a month ago, and asked her to give me some comment on it. I heard nothing from her, I heard nothing from the city until this morning, I got an email with a, about two hundred and sixty pages of documents, which I went through and found our little packet. So what I did was put together my own pamphlet, am I approaching?
Please.
I have one for each council member. There's an index in the front. I don't find any of that document. And essentially, we are not asking for a conditional use permit at this point. We're not asking for an amendment of the conditional use permit. We're asking for a clarification because the history of this, of course, is in 2014, the city monroes granted a conditional use permit. They erroneously stated it as being farm supply equipment, which has raised or caused confusion because that's a term that is not defined in the ordinances. And the, if you start with the exhibit A, the, the history on this is that the Donahue family has owned the property for oh, maybe ten years. Once it had been rezoned from industrial to commercial, the Donahue family made an application in mid-2014, approximately two years ago. The Donahue's intention that the application applied to used auto sales as, as well as farm supplies and equipment. My understanding is that the first public hearing on this matter was on July 16, 2014. And at that time, planning and zoning, or planning commission, requested a more definitive explanation of what the Donahue family wanted. The exhibit A is the written clarification that Tony Donahue gave the city, together with a July 28, 2014 site and grading plan that had been prepared by Auto Associates. Exhibit B is the resolution granting the conditional use permit. Now, one of the things that staff has not mentioned to you is, at the same time that the city granted the conditional use permit request, and again, failed to mention auto sales, they also granted the request of varlets, which dealt with parking. It was tied into the conditional use permit. The Donahues understood that their request for both auto sales and farm equipment had been granted. In fact, at no time has the city notified the Donahues that their request for auto sales was denied. In fact, when Butch Donahue, Tony's father, wanted to transfer his automobile motor vehicle license from their long time, longstanding business site in Delmo to this Monroe's site, that's exhibit D. That is the document that Minnesota Department of Public Safety, Driver and Motor Vehicle Services Department required for Donahue's port's transfer of its dealer's license. And you note on that document, the signature of Ms. Barbara, I hope I pronounced correctly, Twain Swanson, dated and notarized October 6, 2014. In reliance on that, the Donahues transferred their license and started business here on the site. They also did the grading and site plan in accordance with the grading and site plan that is attached, it's the last page of exhibit A. Actually, they paved a little bit more of the site than required. Now, what they didn't do, they didn't do curb and gutter, which was not required under the varlets. And that leads into some of the problems that we're having now. Over the last two years, there've been a number of issues with the Donahue family having certain items for sale on their lot that they understood were permitted. The city has taken the position, they're not permitted. I do want to emphatically say, in response to staff's comments, there is no junk on the site. There is no storage on the site. There are disputes as to whether or not we can sell trailers there, and exactly what farm supply equipment is, because of course, that's a term that is not defined in your What is defined in your ordinances is automobile sales. That's in section one oh two dash two, under commercial use, it's subparagraph C, and it says, quote, "The use of any building or land area for the display and sale of new or used automobiles, trucks, vans, trailers, or recreational vehicles, including any major or minor automobile repair or service uses conducted as an accessory use." Now, just to make it clear, our position is, the conditional use permit that was issued back in 2014 included the automobile sales, either not explicitly or certainly implied because that was what was requested and the city did not deny it, obviously under sixty day rule was granted. The Donahue family attempted to approach this matter in kind of the least obtrusive manner. They had a prospective tenant in January of 2016. That was Travis Kendrick. He wanted to do a used automobile sales facility. Tony Donahue advised him to come to the city and make sure that that was okay. City advised to apply for a new CUP. They did that, but then at the public hearing that Ms. Faust referred to in February, the planning commission and Faust had raised a number of issues over how much parking was there, curb and gutter, another stormwater management plan, all of the issues that were resolved in 2014 with that variance. And also resolved by the Donahues making capital expenditures on the property in accordance with the express terms of the variance and the site and grading plan. The Donahues looked at the requirements that the city was making in February and March of 2016 and said, this ain't going to work economically. It's just going to be too expensive to have this Kendrick in there. So they pulled that permit request. Now, Ms. Faust did provide the planning commission with a staff report dated April 13, 2016, and recommended that the Donahue's CUP be amended. She attached a proposed revision, or proposed resolution, that limited auto sales to, quote, passenger vehicles, had the same language that's in front of you on the, as council calls it, the approved resolution for tonight. Passenger vehicles unstated to be supplied number and to be supplied parking areas. I received that document from the Donahues early in May. It was unsatisfactory to the Donahues. It did not comport with the auto sales that they understood, and I believe they are included in the CUP from 2014. So I prepared a proposed clarification, and I provided that to Ms. Faust under a cover email dated May 16, 2016. I proposed that the clarification be that we could sell farm supplies, farm implement, and automobile sales in the front and other sales in the rear. The original CUP said farm supply equipment in the front and other outdoor sales in the rear. I also asked in my email, by the way, my email is exhibit E, my proposed resolution is exhibit F. And I put that in there because I did receive Mr. Pratt's two-page memo this morning, but I have not received any staff report regarding these resolutions. The only thing that I've gotten is the April one, which was unsatisfactory. I asked Ms. Faust to contact me with her thoughts about my proposed resolution, clarifying the existing CUP in the context of the existing variance, but I heard nothing until I got this email. this email this morning, which I understood was an invitation to appear here today. The email is exhibit H in the packet before you. The memo from Mr. Pratt and the two alternate resolutions are exhibit G. Our request is that the council adopt our proposed clarification that is in front of you, that is exhibit F in the packet. Right now, the approved draft form that council has provided you does not contain anything regarding the specified number of automobiles. And of course, instead of automobile sales, which is a very broad definition under Montrose ordinance definitions, this one is limited to passenger vehicles only, which is something that the Donahues have never requested, and I'm not sure where it comes from. As I said, the Donahues have tried to work with the city on this, but unless we get something clarified, we don't have a choice, because they cannot operate the way they are now with the city staff continuing saying, "You got a trailer up there, you can't have a trailer. You got a bobcat out there, you can't have a bobcat. You got a backhoe up there, you can't have a bobcat or a backhoe," both of which are farm equipment. Trailers are specifically included in the city's own definition of automobile sales. And as I said, we believe that automobile sales were approved in our original application back in 2014, as evidenced by the city's own acknowledgement of that to the Minnesota Department of Public Safety. So, if we have to, we'll have to litigate. We certainly don't want to do that, but the situation needs clarification, and that's why we've made the proposal. In somewhat personally, professionally, that I made a proposal 28 days ago, and I heard nothing until this morning. And we are presented with two alternative resolutions to date that we had no input If you have any questions, I'd like to try to address them. And of course, both Butch and Tony Donahue are here as well.
Can we clarify them? Yes, there was no.
I would like to.
Okay.
I do have an email dated May 16 that confirms receipt of the email and hoping that I would be referring it to staff.
Your response to the email?
Correct.
That was what, May, you said, May 16?
Yes. And we didn't get a response back until now. I did respond that confirmed receipts and that it all really sounds there.
So, almost, May 16.
I did receive that. I guess I was referring to a substantive response.
Right. Is there a reason why it took?
Mayor Council, this transaction obviously has a lot of situations going on. I was aware, and it was at staff meeting out here last month, where we talked about this situation, we were still needing basic information from the applicants, as far as the spaces and the square footage and the examining parts basically via the code. So, as far as I knew, this wasn't, this may not even have been a ripe situation. I typically, if there are ordinances or resolutions that need to be drafted, a lot of times I draft those, or you land those, or the city staff does. Outside parties cannot. And so, I know that there was communication between the applicants and city staff. It was, I think, called out maybe one of the planning commission mentions for review, because we did not receive that information. And we still have, we still have to deal with potential null ordinance on the property today. So those are all ripe for discussion as well as this, I'm sure. So that's, I prepared the two resolutions that went in the packet, based on an approval and a denial based on Mark's instructions with staff.
I'd like to make first response, because I want to make it very clear. The reason that we proposed the clarification was, we don't want to be in the situation of providing the information that the planning commission and Ms. Faust raised after the February meeting, because it doesn't take into consideration the fact that we already have an existing variance there, and we've improved the property in accordance with that variance. We don't want to go down the road of talking about more paid parking, curb and gutter, and a new stormwater retention or stormwater management plan. All of those are very expensive. They were expensive when we did them in 2012, I'm sorry, 2014, and we don't want to go down that path. I thought I made that clear in my May 16 memo to Ms. Faust. I certainly thought I made it clear with our proposed resolution, which was a modification of the proposed resolution that she had with her April 13 recommendation, her staff report to the planning commission. And I understood that that was to, that the planning commission was to consider our proposed revisions at their May 18 meeting, but they didn't, and then we didn't pull it off. Planning commission pulled it off. I saw that in the minutes that I received today as part of the packet.
I was just gonna ask that question, because I was at that meeting, and they were to be on there. Donahue was on agenda originally, but then removed. My question is why?
Yes, and we were, I was prepared to appear that evening, and we were notified sometime in the afternoon, Tony?
Yeah.
Not to come?
I talked to May here, I don't remember who I talked to, but yeah.
If I could address that, Mayor members of council. The planning commission had asked for additional information. The original application form that we have on file does not specify automobile sales. And the, I can send you a copy of that application form. At that planning commission meeting, the original request was for farm supply, and there's some discrepancy, and I think we've all worked through this and find a resolution, but the fact is, the original application does not say automobile sales. The presentation was for farm supply store. It was submitted.
Original application didn't say.
The copy I filed was not.
Why?
So subsequently, we received a letter of request and extension until June 30th, as all the information was not yet available to be provided on a number of vehicles to be parked on the site. So that is the reason it came off of the agenda. We have on the email on file that says, "Extension through June 30." Our intent was not to require additional parking to be paved and curb and guttered in the stormwater plan. We simply wanted to know how many vehicles do you want, what size of space do you want to accommodate the request to ensure, like we with Borahide Nelson and every other automobile sales in the community, that it meets the code requirements. So the other CUPs that have been granted for automobile sales have specified a maximum 17 vehicles and a maximum X number of vehicles. The original request, there's some confusion on whether or not automobile sales were intended to be a part of it, but none of the application materials or resolution identified five cars or six cars. The big question is, is that a question?
My question is, if there's not clarification on automobile sales, why would they be able to be understanding that there was and have exhibit E in here, dealer license for used and sale? Why would they have gotten that exhibit E?
If you see that, it is noted that it is subject to conditions, and the file at City Hall has the CUP resolution attached, so that CUP and this license is subject to those conditions. So it was an approval for outdoor sales lot, so if they were going to be selling a farm-related equipment, it's my understanding that this license would be needed. I think everyone wants to work together to make this a usable site. Planning commission, last time we discussed it, was just looking for clarification on how many vehicles and what size of space is dedicated to this use, so that we can appropriately apply a number of how many cars do we sell on the lot. And passenger vehicle was simply to clarify that it would not be semi-trucks, trailers, or truck on the site for sale.
And that's one of the problems, because the Donahue license allows sale of motor vehicles. That's anything that's licensed, that's trailers, that's semi-trucks, pickup trucks, you name it. And quite frankly, now we're saying that the application did not say auto sales. Certainly, Mr. Donahue's clarifying letter, in either the end of July or the beginning of August, specifically states it. It says, "Usage, used vehicle and farm equipment sales." And there was never a denial on that. Obviously, the city thought that automobile sales were included, because that's what the exhibit D confirmation states. And that certainly was what the Donahue family understood when it made the improvements on the property in accordance with the site and grading plan that Auto Associates has in there dated July 28, 2014.
So Joe, exhibit A, they have the CUP request from the Donahue stated, you know, and you have one for sales. It's not stated anywhere. Is this the physical copy that we have on file?
It's not the original application I have on file, but it, I'd have to look back to see if I have that and a subsequent request.
I think we should, in this situation, where it is. We have a different request.
I didn't turn back all the way to you.
I think what we actually need too, is kind of a clarification of how the property will be used, what types of vehicle will be where, and obviously, if it's excavation equipment, I can think that I've seen there, like the backhoes and what have you, they should be in the rear of the property. I've also seen passenger vehicles for sale on the property, and I've seen, I think, a bobcat, if I'm not mistaken. But where that equipment's gonna be on the property and how that could be, of course, how you intend to use the property, that needs to be clarified. And then I think we can make a good decision on an amendment to the CUP that was issued in 2014, because obviously, there are some, he said, she said, or they said, issues here as to what the intent was for the CUPs and how it was actually written. And I think we need to have an amendment that will address that and specifically state what will be allowed on the property to amend the existing CUP. And I think that would clarify a lot of it. And I think that that should also include the types of equipment that may be front-loaded, the types of equipment that need to be rear-loaded. In other words, if it's construction equipment, that should probably be in the rear. If it's farm use equipment, that should probably be in, you know.
And we're certainly willing to work on some clarification. That's what I was hoping to initiate when I made my proposal months ago.
And I also understand there's some need for flexibility as well, because you can't tell for sure what you're gonna have to sell, as you get inventory in, that's gonna be fluctuating. But I think that we could identify types of equipment and where that could be on the property. You know, I know that there's a side long, the dollar show there, that would probably be allowed for trailer equipment or that kind of stuff. There's also area in the back to be used for heavy equipment, and there can be an area up front that would be used for vehicles. We just need to have a ballpark, a ballpark to hear what's gonna be there and where it could be on location, and then we can identify what types of sales are gonna go in there. And I think that would help us to be able to clarify and get a good CUP that can be met, and then we can look at what the requirements are as far as paving, based on number of customers and that kind of thing. Is that on the right track, Joe?
Yes.
Okay. Can we get that work together so we can have a decent, decent?
But paving is already done pursuant to the various. And see, that's where we didn't want to go down this road of saying, "Well, we have to have X number." We've got 28 parking spaces.
Okay.
I mean, so, we got a lot of paving as it is already, but we didn't want to go down the road where staff is ignoring the fact that we've already got a variance, and we've improved a lot pursuant to, in accordance with that variance, actually went beyond as far as the paving.
And I think that it would be an amendment to the existing variance. Is that correct, Joe?
The variance we've acknowledged and the planning commission has not had concerns with, so I'm sorry if there's a misinterpretation on that. And we have had some email correspondence between the applicant and myself, just on items that were needed. It was just the floor plan, clarification on the type of vehicles, and rule of non-compliant items. So that was the last correspondence on May 11, followed up by correspondence from the applicant saying, "We don't have time to show you. We actually paid more than what you had asked for, but we don't have time to get a new survey with those parking spaces to you and the information requested, hence the extension to June 30." So I think the intent all the time is to try to work together and just obtain that information.
So we have an extension through June 30?
Correct, but this is your last meeting before June 30, so we need your actions. How much do we let standing here?
Mr. Mayor, could I just maybe add something to this? If, I mean, I think we're at the point, you know, we have exhibits, various exhibits here. We have a 2014 resolution that doesn't make a mention of auto sales, yet we have potential mention of some sales back at this document that Swanson signed. If people aren't allergic to another meeting, to a meeting on this with applicants, council, planning, mayor, somebody from council, just to be in the same room at the same time, because I think a lot of things are kinda flying back and forth. I certainly had a belief that we had to hit some of these items first as far as the space, the spaces amount, and I'm here in 28 spaces, I haven't heard that before. So getting in a room and handling all that, you know, I didn't get the variance, but I didn't know the actual number. So, that would be my proposal to do, and then potentially, if they're willing to work with an extension until in July perhaps, that we would have a more full resolution before you.
When is this July meeting?
Second Monday, whatever it is.
July 1.
First or the fourth. Sound good?
Did it work for you as well?
I want to say something, but I shouldn't. How about I say, we'll go with that.
So we're gonna set up an additional meeting, and I'll sit down and discuss the suggestions?
Set up a meeting, certainly, where we're all in the same room.
Before the.
Before the next council meeting.
Before the next council meeting. So the entire council must be involved in this special council meeting, so that's pretty.
All of this, excuse me, just a minute, all of this was discussed entirely with the first CUP. Horse trailers, used vehicles, used smaller farm tractors, three-sided sheds, any other used vehicles that we could get in. The reason being is the used vehicles were gonna be the unit where we could generate some income to start our protective, animal protection sheds. Well, when all of this started coming apart, I wasn't gonna lay in another 30, 40,000 dollars root of sheet metal and rods and rails to build more buildings that if I stuck out on the lot, somebody would call and say, "You gotta get them out of there, you can't have it there." Because whenever I tried, in my belief, 100%, I applied for used vehicle license. I acquired a used vehicle license. I spent, what, seven hours at the state Capitol, waiting for that phone call so I could transfer my dealer license. Then I get a letter to the state stating it was approved. Now, what am I supposed to think? I got a license for used vehicles. First time I've been two vehicles in there, I get a phone call from her in about 15 minutes saying, "You can't have one on that lot."
And I think that's what we need to clarify, exactly what the variance, what the variance to that is gonna entail, and make it clear for all of us, so that we know where we're at and how you intend to do business there.
It's real simple.
Yeah.
I did what you.
I did what you asked me. I put 28 spots on instead of eight. I did everything I was supposed to do, and I have yet been allowed to do what I was permitted to do.
When did you attempt to put vehicles on that lot? What was, when was your first attempt?
Well, we had a few of them on there off, but I think it was December, two semis.
Just this past December?
Yes.
So I think that's part of, at least, my understanding of part of the confusion is this CUP was created under previous council. We now only have the document that isn't clear under this council, and so for us.
That's why it's so frustrating to me.
I understand. And I'm just as frustrated that I've had to see you so many times between planning and zoning.
We don't enjoy coming here either. But just give me what I applied for, and let me go out and do my business. That's why I, that's why I got rid of the renter that was there and started spending thousands of dollars on that building to retrieve it back from where it was. Roofs, interior, walls, all of that stuff we had to do. I've spent a lot of time and a lot of effort on that, and I brought back a building that was virtually junk from the previous renter, and I made it into a respectable building that could be used for many, many purposes. And now all of a sudden, I can't use it.
So as we move forward, and we get a good description of what sales will be there, so that we can do an amendment to the CUP?
We can certainly make a good faith effort to. Obviously, one of the problems is neither the term farm supply nor farm supply equipment is defined in the ordinance.
And in the CUP, at least the one that's approved, it's not defined used vehicles in them either. So there's two things, at least as far as I see, that need to be more clearly defined and added.
And it would be just that term meaning or to include, so we have that language in the CUP. And that would then let us both be in a position where we understand what's gonna be on the property and how that meets your business needs as well.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
We need to set the meeting.
Yep. And we also need a later extension.
We'll need a workshop or something. And we'll need to do an extension through.
Well, we agreed to the extension as far as setting up the meeting. I'll have to take a look at the calendar.
Extension until July 31?
Till July 31.
About to July 11.
Wow. I can do that too.
July 31 gave us some flexibility on what we need to have the meeting, but I'm, I'm moving until July.
Well, I know, we need to have the meeting before the council meeting.
Yeah, obviously, before. Have the council official approval on the July 11.
Correct.
Yeah. On July 11, I'm fine.
The date is July 11.
But I'm looking at it right now. We have a termination of June 30, and I want to be able to have that go at least through the 31st July, so we can have that flexibility. We want to be able to do a finalization at the next council meeting and have a workshop sometime prior to that.
Right, so we don't need it past July 11. We really don't. If that's our goal.
I would prefer the July 11.
Is a motion to approve, and this will be the extension of 2014-09?
I think the motion is to table action and request a written extension of the request until July 11.
As stated.
I will second that.
Floyd? All right. Michelle?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Jill?
Aye.
And I go aye. Table list and a written extension through July 11.
And you will then, I have several more questions, sorry. Do you want to then get with Joanne to set up a date?
Yes. Give that to council.
And so could you offer a convention letter and send it?
I can do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay, we need to stop.
Okay.